Good evening and welcome to the Powell Elementary School District meeting for Wednesday, September 17th. We will begin our meeting, the opening of the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no presentations. Do we have any public comments? No public comments?
Yeah, actually, hi. My name's Todd Steinhoff. I have two children in the school. And my wife and I just wanted to come and see if the board or the school is going to be offering any educational support to the parents with a new curriculum that has been instituted. Our children are bringing home stuff that we're not familiar with, and we're wondering if there are any resources out there available for us, the parents.
That's a great question.
That's a great question.
Laura Boudreau is here this evening, and she is our curriculum director for the SVSU. And I know she's just starting her position, but I think she might have a few words on that.
Yeah, I love your question. Like, I absolutely love your question, and I'm gonna take that back because that is our responsibility to find a way to connect with you. So I appreciate you bringing that up, and we are gonna work on that, but thank you so much for your question, and we'll see what we can do to put something together as soon as possible.
Okay.
I know we were planning, you know, another family math night as well, but I do believe that even prior to that, having an informational night about the new Go Math curriculum is math more the area that you're looking at at this time?
At this time, yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And we are, as a district, with a new curriculum, as far as, I should say, new resource, because the curriculum really is the common core, but a new resource has been purchased, and, you know, many of our staff members are attending training prior to school starting last year as well, and also this week with an online portion. Think Central is what it's called, but it's an online portion of our Go Math curriculum. But we will definitely look to the future for educating parents with the new Go Math.
Right, I just feel as a parent of a child that brings home work that I'm not familiar with, I should at least be able to help my child with that.
Yeah.
I don't want to send back to school with questions.
Absolutely.
Right. Actually, the other evening after our open house, we had our Title I meeting and our PTG meeting up here in the library, and that was a question, it wasn't similar to that, but it was a question of could Go Math resources go on our website so parents could go on and actually take a look at the resources through our either SVSU website or Powell website? More of like an instructional manual for parents to view?
Yes.
So that was an idea that I was going to bring out as well, but it has been even mentioned at our PTG meeting just here recently.
Very.
Thank you, Todd.
My wife. I just also wanted to speak. I'm Heather Steinhoff. We have a second grader and a kindergartner, and we're a little concerned at the size of the kindergarten class this year. I think we knew this was spoken about prior to this, how large it was gonna be. I believe they're 20 and 21 in each classroom. I just, I'm really concerned. That's a big class for any grade teacher, but just wondering what support the teachers are getting for that.
Well, I believe there's a pair of, there's a pair in the...
I'm sorry, what?
There is a pair of professional in the kindergarten class.
Correct. I just...
What's the camp, I guess?
Yeah, I understand is the Bennington schools do about 15, 17. They try to keep their kindergartens smaller, and they get bigger as they go because the kids, I mean, these are, these are kids of all, whole range of where they're at. So I just, I just think...
We've actually had 24, two or three years back of Miss Barrett, see if she can...
Well, it's concerned about are the children getting what they deserve?
Especially with this new curriculum, because I'm seeing different things with him that he's coming home with that my, my second grader didn't come home with. So we're throwing this at the students and the teachers, and plus the numbers. I mean, that's, that's a lot of kindergartners.
Yeah, along with not only just the pair of support in the classroom, which I, you know, I truly believe in, especially a kindergarten, we're going to what's called an MTSS system, a multi-tiered system of support. And in our first tier, where all of the students are getting the information from the teachers, we also have a push-in model in kindergarten where our interventionists, we used to call them Title I teachers, we call them interventionists now, our interventionists are pushing into those classrooms to assist in math as well as reading. Mrs. Crawford and Ms. Barrett is here as well. I mean, they can comment kind of as far as what support you feel like you're getting as well.
We weren't necessarily looking to put anybody on the spot.
No, we weren't. I think it would be best that we hear their concerns and comments, and we're hearing that for the first time, I am. And, but it's now on our radar, and I think we, we can meet as administrations so that we can have a more response, a better response once we understand it. But I'm hearing your concern, and I appreciate that, and thank you.
Okay, if it's okay with the board, I would really like to move our school treasurer...
I have public speaking as well.
Oh, yes.
Public comment.
Me too.
Okay, please step forward and tell us your name.
My name is Kaylee Stumpf. I have two daughters in this school, and I was recently informed that the head lice policy has changed, which has me very well concerned as a mother, because I've been through it, and I don't want to go through it again. As well as many, many other parents, I don't feel that it's right that there's no control measure at all. People, kids can kind of just stay in the class with any degree of head lice at all. That is, I, can I give you just some information? I started a petition online, this is the names as well as comments that they wrote. This is a little bit of research that I've done on my own. I believe that they changed the policy for numerous reasons, but one of them being that the AAP says that they're not disease-carrying bugs, and they basically should not be excluded from school.
That's right.
I found different information from the CDC and the Vermont Department of Health, but I don't, I don't agree that they should be excluded from school either. If you look in this book, I have a proposal to the head lice policy where they're not sent home early from school, but they avoid close contact with other children while they're in school for the day. And the policies are in here. I put the new, the old...
But I had literature from the federal government and how they became like, some things were myths about head lice, like head lice can't jump from one head to another.
Right.
That's a myth. You have to really be contacted, leaning against each other.
Right.
A myth of like having a hat on and putting a hat on, that's also a myth. I wish I had that in front of me.
Well, yes, I do agree, but if you look at, I know kindergarten, I'm not sure about first, but I know at least second, my oldest is in third grade, they're cubbies, they just, it's all in one big cubby. So if it falls off onto their backpack, they put it in, it's gonna go on. They can live up to two days outside of the head. I mean, I've done my own research on it as well. I just don't think it's, with no control measure, it's gonna be out of control.
What I'd like to suggest is, because we're just getting this now, is to study it, but I also would suggest that you go, Angie is representing the Powell board at our policy meeting, and I would suggest that you take this information to their policy board.
I will.
And attend that meeting, and it's when?
October 6th.
October 6th.
I'm not sure, you guys don't have name tags?
At 4:30.
Okay, I've spoken with you. I've spoken with you.
So 4:30 on the 6th at the Supervisory Unit?
Yeah, I got that message today. So I will attend that as well.
Because, what was the nurse's name? I'm sorry.
Our nurse?
No.
Oh.
Oh, you weren't there.
I wasn't there yet.
I'm so sorry.
Because when I went back into my research after we spoke, it did predate me when it changed, so, and I've done a little research, so we'll have stuff for that meeting. It'll, I spoke to the chair of the Policy Committee, addressed your concerns with them, so it will be on the agenda for that meeting.
Okay.
I have a question for Kaylee.
Yeah.
Are you objecting to the federal regulation, the state regulation, and in the state, the Agency of Education and Department of Health all have positions on this? I looked up real quick this afternoon. So, and you're, I'm looking at you as a little bit of an expert. Where's the problem? Is it the State Department of Health or the State Department of Education?
Well, a lot of the places, like the AAP and things like that, I actually, I work in a pediatrician's office, and I spoke with one of the doctors about this yesterday as well, one that I've been pretty close with, and he said, I agree with doing away with the no-nit policy, which is what a lot of the places are saying, but the live head lice is kind of a different story. The CDC and the Vermont Department of Health are saying, I can't even, it's right in here. They say that...
More of my question is, who's controlling the problem here in Powell? Is it the state?
It's the SVSU, from what I understand. There's no, there's no state or federal laws that say you have to have this policy. Everything advises, look to your school district for your policy. You guys, not specifically you guys, but the SVSU district as itself makes this policy. I've looked at other policies in the state of Vermont, and none of them that I've found, except for this school district, is like this.
Does the Vermont State Board of Education manual rules and practices that speaks to it? Is that for...
Okay, so I would suggest, I would suggest that we study this problem more deeply because it's a serious matter.
It is a very serious matter.
Mrs. Stumpf, I'd also like to thank you for starting out at the classroom teacher level, and you went to the nurse, and you went to me as well, you went to the superintendent. I really want to thank you for going through the correct, I don't want to say chain of command, but the correct procedures. Yeah, when you, when you have a concern, going right to the classroom teacher first, learning about it, and moving on, so I want to thank you for that.
You're probably for, but thank you so much because, again, this is important, and we want to get to the bottom of it.
Yes.
All right, and so we will be in touch with you.
Okay.
And are you gonna come to that policy?
Yes, I will.
That's important, yes.
It's, it's a Monday. I'll see if I, I don't actually work till 5:00, but I'll see if I can, it's 4:30 or so?
4:30, yes.
Where's that one located?
Central office.
On South Stream Road.
Yes.
Yeah.
You walk in the door, and you take your right, you're right in there.
Okay, yeah, I can do that. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any other?
No.
Hello, my name's Krista Chenal. I have a daughter that attends school here, and I have to apologize because I haven't come to Mr. Phillips. When I tried to come, he was absent, he was out ill. It recently came to my attention that there's no more aides allowed on the buses in the morning, more volunteers, and I am very, very upset by this, only because my child last year, I do believe I spoke to Mr. Phillips and her teacher at the time, was exposed seven times last year on the public bus, and I know, understand that there's cameras, but a camera can't see between the seats. And it took a lot for my daughter to tell me, maybe it was the year before, because she was in kindergarten, and she was very upset by this, and everything's new, and I had, I came to people a couple times, and then finally the boy was taken off the bus. My other thing is, is the public, I mean, universal, the United States, everyone is addressing bullying issues, and I believe that the cameras are beneficial, but you cannot stop someone from bullying another child with a camera, and the bus driver can't stop that either. I mean, he can't pull over, he can't intervene, and you don't know what can be said or done between the seats to other children, and to me, that's just, that's not okay. So I was told that the bus that my daughter rides is mainly kindergarten and first grade students. Who need, I mean, kindergarteners, they're new. I think, my daughter was saying that a little girl kept getting on the bus crying, very upset. I think we need an aide or volunteer for multiple reasons, for protection, for company, for friendship. I mean, the aides, the volunteers that have been in my daughter's bus, she was having a very hard time getting on the bus after her first, the new thing you guys are doing, the new trainings you're doing for, I can't think of the name of it, for someone comes into the school, your new...
Lockdown.
Yeah, lockdown.
Oh, the lockdown.
The lockdown.
She was traumatized.
She was completely traumatized for weeks, and then she overheard some sixth graders on the bus saying how a bus driver had been shot, trying to protect little boys. My daughter doesn't watch the news, she's a kindergartner, I don't allow it. So she was hearing all this stuff the same day of the lockdown on the bus, and she, I had to drag her on the bus, kicking and screaming. I was a new mom at home that just had a C-section, I couldn't drive. I had to physically, my daughter was coming to school in highs, freaking out, and they're like, oh, your daughter's not the same anymore. She was petrified, petrified. So there's a lot of talk on the bus, too, that also can traumatize children, and I really think that you need one or two people on that bus to help everyone feel safe and comfortable. I mean, that's my opinion, and I don't know why the aides were cut off the bus. Is there a reason?
Yes, there was. We were getting a lot of phone calls about cutting our taxes, and we, we just had the opportunity to put the cameras on the bus. At the time, there weren't a lot, well, Bennington doesn't have pares on the bus. We started that years ago. So we were given the suggestion of replacing the pares with the cameras, and at the time, I didn't realize that the new buses we've been purchasing, the seats are quite high. That was something I actually just learned two days ago when I stopped here. So we keep the pares on the bus in the afternoon, because one of the bus drivers had said they're kind of comatose in the morning, but on the way home, they're more wilder, and, you know, so we did keep the pares on the bus in the afternoon.
Okay, so...
This is probably a situation that the board's gonna take under advisement and talk about.
Right, because volunteers are not paying.
No.
So volunteers, we don't, so I don't understand why it was even an option to take them off the bus. If you have a parent that's willing to ride these buses to help keep kids safe, I don't even know why there was a new policy implemented. To me, I don't understand that, especially with the seats being taller, there being more kids in classes, more kindergartners this year. I mean, all in all, I just think it's, I mean, with the adult ratio to children in school, there's how many children on a bus and one adult, one bus driver, who's, he's gotta get them home safely.
Right.
So I'm very, very upset about that. And until something happens, I know a lot of parents are having their children not ride the bus, and they're missing time at work and stuff to transport their children to school, because the school doors don't open until 8 o'clock, so...
Thank you, we appreciate you coming in.
And once again, I'm sorry that I didn't come in with all my stuff, but thank you.
It's all right. Thank you for coming. Okay, is there any other public comments? Okay, if it's all right with the board, I would like to have our treasure, school treasurer, come forward. Now, I'd like to move it around a little bit, because after that, we're gonna, we have to do executive session for personnel. Ellen, okay?
With the tax rate and everything being a little behind with the town of Powell, we weren't sure if we're gonna get our base end. We got 90% of what we got last year for it. I'm still wishing to open a line of credit for $200,000 in case there's a shortfall in the middle end of November until everything is settled and we get the rest of our money. So if the board wishes to do so, I would like you to sign this so that I can open the line of credit. It will only be used if it needs to be used.
It's a bridge.
Otherwise, it's just a bridge thing to have open if bills come up and there's, the rest of the money hasn't come in yet.
Yeah.
Okay? And it will not be used in any other manner.
Okay, what's the board's question?
So moved.
Okay, may I have a second to sign it? All in favor? Okay.
And there's three pages, it's like every other page to sign, okay? Thank you.
Can you want all board members to sign?
So I can't remember what order that goes in, so if it's not stuck, it's all right.
I have faith in you that you can figure it out.
I can think of it. It's amazing.
And thank you for bringing that in. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Do you have a part here? Someone has the part?
For the time being, yes. We're trying to sign the clerk so we can free up our new board member.
Ah. Would you like to be clerk? No.
I was gonna ask her.
That was an awful quick yawn. But thank you for asking. Jim, you need to sign this one?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Have a great night, guys.
All right, thank you. If it's all right with the board, I would like to make a motion to move executive session. We're move, we're moving the executive session for student matter that's on number nine, and I would like to move it up to four and a half.
So moved. Second.
So, we will adjourn for executive session. We will be back for executive session. If it's okay with the board, I would like to make another move. We'd like to move the superintendent up, number eight, and bring him up to 4.3. Okay? He does have to attend the MAU meeting in Bennington, so we will let him move right along. Jim?
Thank you. For my report, my report's a little bit different this tonight, because I want to emphasize how important, I think, what you are gonna see. You're gonna see a presentation from your principal and from, let me introduce the new Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Unit, Laura Boudreau, and she is gonna be part of this presentation. We've heard a lot about our test scores, our AYP assessment, our ranking there, the, our test results from the Kneecap Test, and the change from that to what will be this spring, the S-Back. And I've seen their presentation, and I think that you're gonna find it informative of where we are and the direction that we're gonna head on. So I'm gonna yield the rest of the superintendent's report to them.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, did it totally go back down?
No.
Actually, I am gonna give you copies.
While we're waiting, well, this is the new Director of...
Hi!
Well, welcome.
Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
I'm gonna give you some of the handouts we're gonna refer to.
Okay.
Well, good for you.
But she's not new to the district, though.
A what?
Not new to the district.
I'm not new, I've been around a long time. Two, two. You're welcome. See, there you go. You're welcome.
Yeah. We are.
We're ready.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, so, we're here to, this is our, the AYP presentation, but we're really focusing on, we're starting our presentation focusing on the work of Rebecca Holcombe, the Secretary of Education, who's made two wonderful statements that we want to kind of start with. So... So she created or drafted a letter to the parents and the caregivers in the state of Vermont, and it basically, a basic statement that I took from it says, "Under the No Child Left Behind Act, as of 2014, if only one child in your school does not score as proficient on state tests, then your school must be identified as a low performing under federal law." This year, every school whose students took the Kneecap Test last year is now considered low performing, so only if one student didn't test as proficient. And in her resolution, the Vermont State Board of Education resolution, you can find this quote, "Educators need to make use of diverse indicators of student learning and strengths in order to comprehensively assess student progress and adjust their practice to continuously improve learning." So they're really looking for schools to look at, use multiple measures to figure out where students at and to figure out where they need to go. They also need to document the opportunities schools provide to further the goals of equity and growth, and Mr. Phillips is gonna, in a minute, share the opportunities the panel is offering to their students. Rebecca Holcombe also shared current trends in Vermont, which I find these very interesting. Trends in International Mathematics and Science Study from 2013, one of the two large international comparative assessments ranked Vermont seventh in the world in eighth grade mathematics and fourth in science. On the National Assessment of Educational Progress, Vermont consistently ranks at the highest levels. We have the best graduation rate in the nation and are ranked second in child well-being. And the Wallet Hub, a social media company, analyzed 12 different quality metrics and ranked Vermont's school system third in the nation in terms of school performance and outcomes. Just really, just information that's really nice to hear. So now I'm gonna let Phillips take over.
So in your handout, the next few slides just kind of sum up from 2009, 2013, our Kneecap reading as well as our math scores. I know that slide is a little bit blurry, but we pretty much remain either consistent or in the last couple of years. I know yours don't, the handout doesn't show the blue and doesn't show the red, but look up here, the state of Vermont, students are proficient in the area of reading, just about the 70% mark. We have been slightly declining in the area of reading as far as the proficiency level in the area of math, and again, there's that snapshot from 2009 to 2013. In the area of math, we've pretty much remained consistent, but we have, this past year, in 2013, our proficiency level did bunch up or jump up just slightly. But overall, as you know, we are a school that did not meet requirements in reading and math. So part of what we did this last year with our leadership team, as you know, when we presented this last year, our school effectiveness plan is really filled with a number of action steps for us to do and a number of things that we're going to be able to put in place to make sure that our students are receiving the best education here at Powell School. So the next slide talks about our purpose, and it's really, the first part is our mission statement. Powell Elementary School is dedicated to providing opportunities and experiences which enable children to be conscientious citizens and lifelong learners with respect for themselves, each other, and our world. The next portion actually comes from our effectiveness plan, and the big word there is collaboration. And if you take a look at the next slide, since we don't have kneecaps this fall and S-Back is all new, the piece of the effectiveness, where we're going over the next two years, we use AIMS Web as well as MAPS, Measures of Academic Progress, three times a year. So we're looking for a 5% increase in proficiency in the areas of math and literacy as well over the next two years. A number of our action steps, as you remember last year when the school effectiveness plan was presented, there are a ton of action steps in here. I just pulled out a few of the highlights. The first bullet there is that we have created a leadership team, and the leadership team you met last spring, we presented the school effectiveness plan. The second bullet there talks about an infrastructure within the school that supports MTSS, and you're gonna hear that a lot, MTSS, the multi-tiered system of support. And that's where Tier One is your first instruction in the classroom. All students are receiving that Tier One. Tier Two is where we have our interventionists and our classroom teachers working with small groups of students, and then the Tier Three is our special education students. So our infrastructure really has changed based on our master schedule of blocks of time that are really carved out in the day for our teaching staff. It really comes down to fidelity, making sure and ensuring that math is being taught, reading is being taught at a certain time of the day. So no longer really can a staff member or a teacher say, "I'm not going to teach reading today," or "I don't feel like teaching reading today, I'm just going to teach social studies, science, and math today." It's really important that students have that exposure on a daily basis, and that has been put in place, our...
Skylar's your rep on that professional development committee.
The, as you heard from our parents tonight, we do have a new resource that can be confusing for some folks, including our parents, and you really want to have a direction, they want to help their child, and, you know, we want to provide that for our staff as well. So working with the curriculum director and the professional development committee, making sure and ensuring that we are receiving our PD throughout the year. We're going to be creating a data team. Laura and I talked about that and what we want, what is the purpose of that data team, and that's needed in our School Effectiveness Plan. And that really leads into the next bullet of creating protocols of how we assess and analyze the data, how do we intervene and progress monitor our students. And that's all part of this Student Effectiveness Plan. The next slide really comes down to some budget ideas and what we need from the SVSU as well as our Powell School Board to support us. We have to make sure that we have appropriate materials for math, literacy, and science. We want to make sure that we have continued PD in math, reading, writing, and again, MTSS, multi-tiered system of support. And we have to take a look at our budget as far as providing other opportunities for students outside of our school day, taking a look at our summer academic program and our after-school program.
So we want to end because Rebecca Holcomb has created this wonderful level of enthusiasm. She's kind of given us permission to come together to innovate and improve our schools, to be creative, to do actual research with our teachers. And so we're ending with this quote from her that says, "Vermont has a proud and distinguished educational history, but we know we can always do better. We are committed to supporting our schools as they find more effective and more engaging ways to improve skills and knowledge of our children. As we've done before, we intend to draw on the tremendous professional capability of teachers across the state as we work to continuously improve our schools." And thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, I just want to, we still have a math lab in this building, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We do, okay. And that's actually incorporated into the classroom time?
Yes. She's pushing into the classroom as well as doing small tiered groups as well. And our interventionist, like I said, our Title I, teachers in the past, it was reading that they were working with our students, and now they're working with our students in reading and math.
Great.
The question on the resources, if I recall, the Go Math was purchased by the Supervisory Union and shared with all the different schools.
Correct.
Will all these tools be handled the same way?
Within the other areas?
Will Powell be free to find its own little reading thing, or we all have to get together?
That's a great, so one thing that's happening this year that's really exciting is we've restarted some district-level committees, and we're pulling together teachers. So there will be representatives from Powell on the new, it's ELA, but it's English Language Arts Committee. And we are going to review the Common Core and adapt that to our, to the culture of our local community. And then we'll be looking at what resources do we need to support that? And that looks a little bit different than math, but you do have representatives that have been recommended that are going to be on that committee that will represent Powell and best inform your board as what those needs are.
So on Go Math, we got one system, we got Go Math for all the schools, and then Powell paid our fair share of that. So you're saying this committee that you formed will hopefully take care of us?
Yeah, we're, the goal is to look at, really review the Common Core to make, number one, the goal is to make sure that everyone understands the ELA part or the English Language Arts portion of the Common Core, and then to make sure that we have a good local curriculum that we think reflects our culture. So that's the first thing that's happening this year. And then we look at what resources do we all have? We kind of take inventory, what do we already have that we can use to meet the expectations of this curriculum? And then if there's holes, then we come back and we let you know, hey, we think that we might need this. You know, an example is nonfiction text or informational text. We need to make sure that 50 percent of the books that kids are handling are informational text or nonfiction. So we've got to assess, what do we have, and does it match the science and social studies topic areas? And so that's just a little example, but we're not near that point yet. So right now, we're just making sure we have a good curriculum document. But that, and so the same thing's happening with science as well.
Yeah, baby steps. That's good. You're moving in the right direction, and I think that's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, I do believe that you two have to go to the board.
We do, but you, what you're seeing tonight is really the beginning of what is going to be our major effort as a Supervisory Union to support.
I think it's great.
Academic achievement, you know, and I think you have to start here with an educational leader, your principal, who embraces these concepts, so that's a great start. And now working with Laura, and I think you have a staff, from what I've seen, that is pretty committed to doing it. And the quote from, this last quote from the Secretary of Education, you know, it is very telling. I mean, it does have a proud history, but we can always do better, and we can't stand still. Even if we were the best school.
We still have to move forward.
Someone would make you their target that they wanted to pass, so we're going to move forward.
We got to meet her on Monday night's meeting, and I was kind of impressed with her. You read about her different times, but she was, she was very good.
I'm going to do more on what the Vermont Superintendent's Association and the Principal's Association, they report that some of you saw that night. Next month, I just, I didn't want to distract from this issue, so.
Yeah, good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so what kind of stuff do you have to read?
I know.
Okay, all right, all right. We already did the tax activation. Action items, award account, consolidated propane bid in your packet. There's consolidated propane bid. Does anyone have it?
Yeah.
Okay, we dealt with this at the SU, but I guess all the individual schools have to deal with it. And they put the bids out, there's several, there's one, two, three, four, four that did send a bid in, the highest being Blue Flame at 37, and the lowest being Haskins Gas at 27. Then you have Synergy at 35, and Suburban at 30. What is the board's pleasure? We need action on this.
Does she have a recommendation?
I don't have any recommendation, and it would be the board's wish. I only just want to let you know that last year, there was 32,000 gallons of propane that was used, and the dollar amount that was spent was about $70,000. Based on that 32,000 gallons used and the difference between the lowest and the next one up, it's like a three cents difference, it comes out to about 1.3 percent difference that would have been, or about eight, nine hundred dollars.
So where is this Haskins located?
Yeah, I don't know.
Haskins is from.
Dorset.
It's from Dorset, Vermont.
I know, I know we're pleased with who we have currently, the Suburban, but, you know, it's.
Well, I think, part of me, as far as looking out for the taxpayers, if we have a low bid, I know we've used Suburban, but my personal feeling is if we have a low bid, I would definitely go with the low bid. I mean, Suburban could have been lower. You don't, I don't feel compelled to just keep using the same one. It's like constantly, I only like chocolate ice cream, so I'm only going to eat chocolate ice cream, you know, but it's, what's the board's pleasure?
So the experience has been good with, Suburban's our current supplier?
Yes.
I want to stay, stay consistent on, I really like to keep, so the difference between Suburban and Haskin is Suburban is within Supervisory Union tax base, aren't they? So we got, we got a tax consideration back from Suburban. You understand what I'm saying? That they're part of the, the local business community, that's all. They're more, they're more local than Haskin is. So as far as the, they are located in anything, correct?
Suburban is, yes.
Now, Suburban is a local company, or are they a big corporation? That's another question.
I think that's, they're more, I think it's, they're outside the area also. Yeah, I think it's a branch that's in Bennington.
We're a branch in Bennington. Okay. What's the board's pleasure? I need a motion.
I don't know anything about Haskins. I mean, with bad weather, everything will get here.
That's my concern too.
Huh?
That's my concern too, the naked from Manchester here and bad weather, all winter and.
How soon do we have to sign this?
Well, SVSU already voted on it.
So what did SVSU?
Well, we'd have to award it so that if, when we start getting the heating system, our season now this year, we'd want to make sure we.
They took Haskins.
So.
All right, well, yeah.
So the, you already have a contract with Haskins?
No.
No, SVSU took it.
They're the ones, we all have to vote, right?
Yes, yes. Each individual building has to vote.
I make a motion that we go with Haskins.
I second it.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion on it? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay. Okay, now we have.
Can you just make a motion also for the treasurer's report? You might have.
That is new. Why are we doing that? We have never done it in 15 years.
Oh, you haven't?
No.
But we'll need to accept the treasurer's report? We move to accept the treasurer's report.
Second.
All right. Although, all right, motion been made and seconded to accept the treasurer's report.
I don't know why. Why are we doing it?
I'll check on that further.
Yeah, please check on it. If there, is there any discussion on this issue? None? See, none? All right, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, they got it. Okay, now we're down to the heating system evaluation.
Yeah, so last meeting, as you recall, one of our board members wanted to make sure that we were looking into this. Our new maintenance supervisor, Kevin Davis, contacted a more local company. I know Climatex was out of the area and had done some work here in the past, so he contacted Alliance Mechanical. They're out of Essex Junction, but they're taking on Arlington Schools, the hospital. So we're going to invite them possibly to come next month to address the board, but I just wanted to let you know that we are, we are looking into it.
Three miles closer.
Yeah. And that's all I have to report on the heating system evaluation.
First of all, it's very comfortable in here tonight. It's nice, this is nice tonight.
I'm freezing. We're glad. Okay, so we'll put him down for the next monthly meeting. All right, we down to the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion seconded. Motion been made and seconded. Okay, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Oh, hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, unanimous, very good. So now we.
I just, policy stance. There is none, but I just want to say that we had participation at board meeting, 7300, and there was a parent there that wanted to put a time on public comment, and I just want to, we decided at the policy not to put a policy in for time that is up to the chair and the board of each district to decide, because if you have one parent, you could let them talk for 20 minutes. If you have 10 parents, you might put a 10-minute limitation on them. I don't think we need a policy in the district to put a time limit. I think it's up to the chair and the board. And I just wanted you guys to be aware of that.
Well, I think most boards, there is a semi-policy that you put the public meetings, you put it, so they can, they can talk.
Public comments, yeah.
But it's usually, we don't let them babble on. I mean, we give them adequate time.
Exactly.
And then if it's an issue like tonight, where we could put it on hold and give us a chance to, to talk about it.
Right.
There's never been an issue.
Right. Just wanted you to be aware.
Okay, very good.
I don't think we've had the end.
We've never said no to anybody for talking.
No, exactly.
But we're there, reasoned, and they can't repeat themselves. All right. So all those in favor of the consent agenda, do you want to?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now we're down to.
Principal's report. Okay, opening of the academic year, we had a very strong opening. We had a couple days of professional development and a great first-day performance, and I did want to share our faculty list with everyone you see.
Thank you.
We're at 244, 245 students. So we're down just a few students slightly. September the 9th, we had open house from 5:30 to 7:00, and then we had our Title I meeting and our PTG meeting at 7 o'clock here in the library. The open house was very well attended, as it always is. And that moves down to the playground committee. Our playground committee met. We're going to be meeting again this next Monday. As you know, the grant is due by the end of the month. I have a very creative grant proposal for the state of Vermont, and.
Very nice.
It has to do with an outdoor classroom and having a building area, an art area, a movement area, so different areas of the playground to incorporate kinesthetic movement and the arts at an outdoor classroom.
So that means there would be a roof. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Oh.
So this is for all the Powell Elementary students.
Correct.
All right. Unfortunately.
And within that grant, I'm going to also submit the tennis court repair.
Oh, that would be like awesome.
Now, within the grant, there is, there is a, they ask you to put in a proposal for a lesser amount, and my proposal is to continue with the outdoor classroom, and then we would need to find funds locally to do the tennis court. But at least initially, I want it all in there as a package, and hopefully we'll know by November whether we're accepted or not.
Well, if we can share that, when we get to the point, as far as the money for the tennis court, the selectmen already said that they would pay, they would pay a portion of that too, because the community does use it.
Right, good.
They were just waiting.
And we'll be meeting again this Monday to kind of just finalize and talk about the outdoor classroom concept again, but I think.
Sounds unique.
It is, and you have to have a unique, creative proposal for this, for this grant, and I'm kind of upbeat and positive that this might.
Might be it, huh?
Might be it.
So was Bill, was Bill Batso able to attend?
He was not, but I do have his letter of support. I'm trying to get a letter of support, and I talked to a principal today about their outdoor classroom concept, and he's writing a letter of support. And then I need one more that I'm looking to get from our Head Start, so we'll have our three letters of support there as well. It'll all be wrapped up and ready to be sent out by the end of September.
Oh, great.
Is there a name for this grant?
It's the one that Bill Batso, it's called the Recreational Facilities Grant that Bill Batso sent out. It kind of encourages us every year to apply for a grant. Two years ago, Gudrun Hutchins and myself, it was more of the whiteboard, interactive board grant for the building, and we were not successful in that attempt. And in thinking of schools, whiteboards and interactive boards are really something that should be supplied to classrooms, and I, I feel like maybe that's one of the reasons why that was not accepted, because it should be a part of a classroom anyway, every day. And this concept is a little bit different, so crossing our fingers, hopefully we'll get the grant.
That'd be great.
And I think that's it.
I have a question, Senator.
Yes.
Thank you for sending for passing out the new forty's list.
And in thinking of schools, whiteboards and interactive boards are really something that should be supplied to classrooms. And I feel like maybe that's one of the reasons why that was not accepted, because it should be a part of a classroom anyway, every day. And this concept is a little bit different, so crossing our fingers, hopefully we'll get the grant.
That'd be great.
And I think that's it.
I have a question, Cindy?
Yes.
Thank you for sending, for passing out the employees list online. Could you just, a two-minute question. Could you just tell us which of these groups do not report to you, like special, specials?
Well, they basically all really do, but I mean, you know, as the.
No, they don't really do.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
As the paraeducators, you know, we do have support this year from an associate director coming into the building, and he'll be part of their evaluation. I would say, you know, they all really do pertain to me as a supervisor or a partial supervisor of everyone here.
I'm trying to clarify in my head which are your direct reports and which go through SBSU.
I mean, you know, your PT, your OT, your psychologist, your speech teacher, even your special educators, and a lot of your paraeducators, they're really SBSU employees.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to get at. I'm trying to get, because of bubbling up the rules about fifteen employees and full-time, part-time, I think here in Powell, we should have a, the board should have a number in mind of actual employees so we don't step over that line and get ourselves in trouble. Thank you.
Okay. Unfortunately, the playground committee is the same time, Monday, as, well, first of all, let me ask, is there anyone on this board that would like to serve on the teacher negotiation committee that is now being started on Monday?
At what time is it?
It starts at, I believe, three-thirty.
People work.
Four o'clock. You know, I'm just gonna ask.
I would love to, I just need.
It's four o'clock, it's central office.
I could do it if it was five-thirty.
Oh, so it's too early?
Yeah, I get it, five.
Okay, so we will keep you in mind for next year. Okay, I'm actually on it, but I thought I would offer because, you know, I thought maybe people would be jumping for joy to take it. But, you know, at least I offered, I told him I would. So it's, I'm not gonna be able to be on that committee that particular meeting that night because we're starting at four o'clock to our first go-around for the teacher negotiations. Okay. I did receive a letter that I would like to, we had this question brought to our board last year, and I thought it was taken care of, but it wasn't. I have a letter, if you don't mind, I'll read it. Dear Cindy, our driveway is used as a bus turnaround and is in great need of repair. The bus has caused ruts and deep potholes resulting in a crown in the driveway. My car bottoms out at the entrance. We are requesting greening be done and potholes filled so that the driveway is flat once more before snow arrives. Feel free to inspect said driveway. This is a driveway that is down off of Route three forty-six, and Joel, I believe, is the bus driver who goes down, and he turns around. This woman has always allowed him to turn around. His, the only other thing he could do is cross over the bridge and turn around there, and I don't feel that that's, that to me, in my mind, is a safety issue.
Because he's gotta go over railroad tracks.
Exactly. So I would like.
Who can we get to fix that?
Well, I spoke to one of the selectmen, and actually the chair, and he said if the board would request, I could send this letter, and we could have our secretary write up something that we would like the select board to maybe help us with this. But this is a new board.
Okay.
So with the board's permission.
So moved.
We do that?
So we're gonna ask the town.
We're gonna ask the town to fix it.
Maybe send us a little bill, or not?
No. Just out of their generosity, be kind to us. Okay? Our next board meeting would be October fifteenth at five-thirty. And sometimes I think I should call you and remind you, but you're really good about showing up. About showing up late and early, I mean, and fixing. You set up so fast, I can't believe it. You do a good job.
Thank you.
Okay. We got our AYP report. Is there any other business to come before this board? No? You're all set?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so those in favor, all right, thank you very much.